Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Auburn School Committee meeting of June 26, 2024 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll start with introductions down here on my right.
Dan Poishon, Ward five.
Quinn Cormley, Ward four.
Corinne McWigan, Ward one.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Pamela Albert, at large.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Pat Garcia, Ward three.
Adam Platt, City Council Representative.
Mark Conrad, Business Manager.
Sue Doras, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone, and our school student representatives are not able to be here tonight. Do I have a motion? We are going to start with moving into executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Pam, Quinn, second. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 405-6A for the All those in favor? We are back in regular session. Moving on to our consent agenda tonight, which includes the approval of our agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes of the June 5, 2024 meeting, as well as the approval of the recommendations of the following certified contracts, including Nicole Alves, Lana Cassidy, Cassie Stellner, Shannon Sampson, Anthony Fabrizio, Alejandra Rodriguez, and Amy Heimerle. purpose of employment of officials, appointees, and employees. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Do I have a motion? Second, Pam.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Pam, Quinn, second. Motion passes. Congratulations. All those in favor? All right. It does not look like I have anyone here for public participation tonight. Okay, we will adjourn to executive session in the bump out room. Okay. So moving on to our presentation from the Franklin School Grant Project. Welcome.
Hi there. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me some time this evening. As you would have seen in your agenda booklet, in late May, Franklin was awarded a $125,000 grant from the J.F. Gorman Foundation. That grant is something that I've been working on since fall, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to go over some of the reasons why we've planned this new programming and went for that funding, as well as let you know a little bit more about how we're going to use that funding.
There we go.
So it will probably be of no surprise to you that students right now, especially in the social and emotional categories, are really struggling. We have traditionally, throughout the years, used the ACEs, the Adverse Childhood Experiences Survey, to kind of get a temperature on where our students are. In our most recent administration of that survey, which was in the fall, 92% of our students had what was considered a statistically significant high score, which would mean that, as a result of their self-reported histories, they may encounter academic or social challenges to being successful at school. And we had about 14% of the students that we surveyed that had indicated that they had had experiences with all 10 of the adverse childhood experiences listed on that survey. Alongside that, we have seen an increase in diagnoses for our students, especially around anxiety, depression, ADHD, all of those sorts of things that definitely have a direct impact on a student's ability to be successful. So, not only do we know that we have a higher percentage of students who have been coming from a history of trauma, we also know that the specific events and incidents that they've experienced are also increasing. And then, at Franklin, we have always taken that relational model of education, which is typically a trauma-informed method, but as we have continued to go on post-pandemic, it has become more and more apparent that we need to add some more tools to our toolbox. So I developed a four-part proposal that I was able to go and share with the Gorman Foundation, and I'm going to go over those briefly. So the first component of this is based off of a 2008 study and book by Dr. John Rady out of Harvard, which talks about children or adolescents that have experienced childhood trauma, without going into too deep of a dive as a brain science nerd that I am. It has an impact on how the neurons and those connections within our brain are formed. And when you're experiencing trauma as a young person, some of those connections just don't get made, or some of them get severed. Through Rady's research, he was able to discover that through a consistent, regular aerobic exercise program, you can actually heal the brain from those traumas. You can actually re-establish some of those connections, build new connections within the brain, which will have cognitive and social-emotional impact on our students. So we're going to pilot that with two 15-student groups of students in the fall. Next week, I'm going to be receiving at Franklin some professional exercise equipment that we will be installing within classrooms, because it's really meant to be an embedded program within the academic time. That's kind of exciting. We have had a history of offering, off and on, trauma-informed yoga to our students either through our physical education program or just as a referral-based program. In my research for this grant, there was a study that was done in a more rural environment than what we live in, but that showed that participants from this rural school district who had high ACEs scores were able to participate in this trauma-informed yoga class, which led to decreases in their anxiety and depression symptomology, as well as increased their resiliency, helped them with sleep, and then general health and well-being. As some people know, when you have those adverse childhood experiences, it not only affects your brain and your learning capacity, but also can have a lot of room for negative health outcomes. So, again, different exercise, different active things work in part to counteract some of those physical symptoms that may appear later in life. So we are partnering with the Sanctuary Yoga Studio in Lewiston. Shanna Breton, who is one of their instructors, has been certified and has taught trauma-informed yoga for many years. We're excited about doing that. The third item relates to the benefit of adolescents having time in nature. Through some of my research, deliberate time in nature does foster a sense of self-identity, belonging, connection, and a sense of stability and permanency. Those are some things that we definitely see affecting students in the alternative program negatively. And we also see students who, even though Maine is a beautiful and very outdoor state, some of them do not have regular access to those kinds of experiences. We find, and through our preliminary research, that students with a history of trauma can have a hard time kind of planning ahead, doing that goal-setting, thinking about, "How do I get from point A to point B?" One of the things about wilderness or outdoor education is that it helps foster that knowledge and that skill, to be able to think if this, then that, to think about the steps that you may need to take in a process. They'll also be working with a lot of hands-on materials, which is very good for a lot of our student profiles, and that it will be a team-building opportunity. We're partnering with a business called Mountain Bear Programming with a main guide, Lou Faling. I've known Lou for many years. He used to do some outdoor training for a women's program that I was a part of, and he has worked as an educator doing this exact kind of thing in the alternative setting. So, really excited to start with that. We will be looking at this program with an older group of students, where we'll be studying how that will help their transition into the world of school, work, et cetera. And then we'll also be doing it with a group of our youngest students that often have the most need for the hands-on, more active opportunities. And then the last component is an animal-assisted education program. There's a lot of research that indicates that having a facility-based therapy dog, which would be a staff member that is of an animal persuasion, can have a positive impact on stress levels, attendance, motivation, et cetera. One of the things that goes hand-in-hand with high ACEs scores is also levels of consistent toxic stress, which those are the things that raise those hormones and those, you know, things within our body that can have those negative outcomes. So aside from having a therapy dog on staff to help with those kind of social and emotional crises, there's also been proven to be cognitive impacts, improvements in literacy, attention, improved memory, and improved problem-solving with the presence of that in the building. I've been partnering with mission-working dogs. Right now, we tentatively have a puppy identified that will be, within the next few months, training on-site, as well as me going through a lot of training on the weekends, but we're really excited. We got to meet her the other day, and so hopefully she'll be joining us soon. So, the reason, you know, I've told you why I think these programs are needed, but now what are we going to be looking for? So obviously, I'll have reporting responsibilities back to the Gorman Foundation, and what we're hoping to see improve for our students would be motivation overall, improvements in their attendance. We do have a significant truancy issue. Academic performance improvements, better emotional regulation, self-sufficiency, self-efficacy, and more post-secondary success. This grant does run for an 18-month period, starting from May, but we'll have continuing reporting obligations for about three years after our first cohort concludes. So, that is a very rapid-fire introduction to what will be happening at Franklin. I will really look forward to coming to you guys with some actual examples of the implementation that's happening, but that's what I have for now. So, that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
I think, okay, I was just going to start saying that I think that this is amazing. I think these are all incredible opportunities for students, and I'm really excited to see what happens with the program and how the students benefit. I guess I'm curious about how the outcomes will be measured. I saw on the slide that you'll have Bates students doing data analysis. Are there, like, pre- and post-surveys with students in order to measure some of those more, you know, specific?
Right.
Self-identified, self-reported items?
Absolutely. I've totally glazed over that, but yes. I've been working with the Psychology Department at Bates College, where they have some interns that are community-based interns, that will be helping us with creating some of those surveys, looking at our past data, and then comparing it against our current data. But yes, we will have to do basically a school attitude survey. It's similar to the one the state of Maine uses, a comprehensive survey for health, well-being, and those sorts of things, and there's a significant portion of that that looks at attitudes towards school. We'll be basing our survey off of that primarily. And that would be pre- and post-surveys. Within each of these areas, we have very specific reporting obligations, so, you know, whatever we're focusing with that area, that will be the data that we'll be tracking. So, that's kind of what my summer is going to be, developing those modes and methods of collecting and analyzing that data. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I echo. I think this is amazing, and I'm always, like, impressed with your school and what you do, and I think thinking outside the box like this, I think is amazing, and I really look forward to seeing the results of this. So, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for your dedication to the students. It shows.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You alluded to the fact that you were going to embed this in the classroom. Is that going to extend the school day, or are you going to... How creative are you going to be?
So, that component specifically that I was talking about, which is the regular daily exercise, fortunately, we have a few case studies of how it has been incorporated into schools in the past. Primarily, the one that's looked at in the book is this school in Naperville, Illinois. And so they were able to either incorporate it as a, you know, very early, almost like homeroom period, or they have embedded it directly within the instructional period. So if you're in your literacy class, you may be reading your book on the treadmill and also doing that piece. So, that's going to be something that I'm definitely going to be relying on my staff to help me navigate, so we're still coming up with some ideas. They're very excited, and we've had lots of ideas for generating enthusiasm. Now we need to get to the nuts and bolts of how that's going to work. The other piece is it's not every day, so they said between two and three days for a student has a beneficial impact. So by kind of staggering which students have access and which days, I think we should be able to manage it. It'll be an adventure.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to some analysis at the end.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. Okay, we do not have a student representative's report tonight, so moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I have a piece of good news to share with you this evening. This is the time of the year when we look at what our anticipated completion rate is for the class that just graduated, and so that would be the class of 24. And to take you back a little bit, four-ish years ago, the Auburn School Department's completion rate was at 72%, and so we had a lot of work to do. And indulge me here, so I said to Scott, Scott is with his daughter tonight, I said, "Is it okay to share?" He said, "Yes." So, the completion rate for the class of 24 is 96.07843137%. So, I want a huge shout-out to the staff and the administration who have worked so hard to move that needle, and that includes you, Melissa, because your kids factor into that graduation rate, and it's really astounding. We've done remarkable work. You may recall, I think it was 10 years ago, the committee set a goal of 95%, and some of you, Pam, were on the board during that first school committee retreat, and decided that you'd stay the course with 95, and I don't think you thought you'd beat that goal four years later, so here you are. So that's a great thing. The other thing that I'd like to do, and I'll try not to well-up and go on for too long, is, this is my last meeting in the Auburn School Department, and I want to thank my staff, and that includes the wonderful team of administrators who so ably lead their schools, includes my office staff, who really are the unsung heroes of the Auburn School Department. They pay the bills, they pay the people, they make sure the place runs, and they are just amazing. And then, of course, to the leadership here around Horseshoe, because you set the vision and said to me four years ago, "We'd like to go here," and here we are. So, I want to thank you for your support, your guidance, and for staying in your lane and staying out of mine, but it has been a really good, really good run, so thank you very much. And finally, to the community, because the community supported the Auburn School Department at the ballot box recently nearly three to one, and that is, I think, a testament to what you folks do and the connections and the support that you have and the credibility that you have in the community. And that's not true everywhere in central Maine. So, congratulations, it's been a great run. I'm very grateful to you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And while I'm at it, see, it's always dangerous to get between a superintendent and a microphone. One of my colleagues is also having his last night tonight. After 40-something years, Mark is retiring, we were talking about it today. He's always worked for board, and no more. So, Mark, on behalf of the Auburn School Department and the wonderful work that you have done, we were so lucky to get the best business manager in New England. I know it took a couple lunches and some convincing, but we're very grateful, so thank you, and we wish you well.
Thank you. So, I do not have a school committee chairperson's report, other than to thank the two of you for all of your dedication, service to the Auburn School Department the last four years. It has truly been a pleasure getting to know both of you, learning from both of you, and I just wish you both the best. The Auburn School Department is better because of both of you, so thank you. Okay, moving on to city council update.
I do not have an update today.
Does Asher have an update? Under committee reports, understanding committees, we have meetings from the Finance Subcommittee from June 19 linked. We also have minutes from the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on June 5 linked, and minutes from the Health and Safety Subcommittee meeting on June 3. And then we also have the agenda linked under the Facilities Advisory Committee that just met this afternoon. So moving on to old business, I will entertain a motion to approve policy AUB EEAE, school bus emergencies, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Pam and Quinn, any thoughts, discussion on this policy? I know we reviewed it at the first reading. Any other additional comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy AUB EEAE. Motion carries. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUBJLCB, immunization of students, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
areas, we have very specific reporting obligations, so, you know, whatever we're focusing with that area, that will be the data that we'll be tracking. So that's kind of what my summer is going to be, developing those modes and methods of collecting and analyzing that data. So, thank you.
Well, I echo. I think this is amazing, and I'm always like impressed with your school and what you do. And I think thinking outside the box like this, I think is amazing, and I really look forward to seeing the results of this. So thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for your dedication to the students. It shows.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you, you alluded to the fact that you were going to embed this in the classroom. Is that going to extend the school day, or are you going to, how creative are you going to be?
So that component specifically that I was talking about, which is the regular daily exercise, fortunately, we have a few case studies of how it has been incorporated into schools in the past. Primarily, the one that's looked at in the book is this school in Naperville, Illinois. And so they were able to either incorporate it as a, you know, very early, almost like homeroom period, or they have embedded it directly within the instructional period. So if you're in your literacy class, you may be reading your book on the treadmill and also doing that piece. So we are, that's going to be something that I'm definitely going to be relying on my staff to help me navigate. So we're still coming up with some ideas. They're very excited, and we've had lots of ideas for generating enthusiasm. Now we need to get to the nuts and bolts of how that's going to work. The other piece is it's not every day, so they said between two and three days for a student has a beneficial impact. So by kind of staggering which students have access and which days, I think we should be able to manage it. It'll be an adventure.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to some analysis at the end.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you so much. Okay, we do not have a student representatives report tonight, so moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I have a piece of good news to share with you this evening. This is the time of the year when we look at what our anticipated completion rate is for the class that just graduated. And so that would be the class of 24. And to take you back a little bit, four-ish years ago, the Auburn School Department's completion rate was at 72%. And so we were, we had a lot of work to do. And indulge me here. So I said to Scott, Scott is with his daughter tonight, I said, "Is it okay to share?" He said, "Yes." So the completion rate for the class of 24 is 96.07843137%. So I want a huge shout-out to the staff and the administration who have worked so hard to move that needle, and that includes you, Melissa, because your kids factor into that graduation rate, and it's really astounding. We've done remarkable work. You may recall, I think it was 10 years ago, the committee set a goal of 95%, and some of you, Pam, were on the board during that first school committee retreat and decided that you'd stay the course with 95. And I don't think you thought you'd beat that goal four years later, so here you are. So that's a great thing. The other thing that I'd like to do, and I'll try not to well-up and go on for too long, is this is my last meeting in the Auburn School Department, and I want to thank my staff, and that includes the wonderful team of administrators who so ably lead their schools, includes my office staff, who really are the unsung heroes of the Auburn School Department. They pay the bills, they pay the people, they make sure the place runs, and they are, they're just amazing. And then, of course, to the leadership here around Horseshoe, because you set the vision and said to me four years ago, "We'd like to go here," and here we are. So I want to thank you for your support, your guidance, and for staying in your lane and staying out of mine. But it has been a really good, really good run, so thank you very much. And finally, to the community, because the community supported the Auburn School Department at the ballot box recently nearly three to one. And that is, I think, a testimony, testament to what you folks do and the connections and the support that you have and the credibility that you have in the community. So, and that's not true everywhere in central Maine. So congratulations, it's been a great run. I'm very grateful to you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And while I'm at it, see, it's always dangerous to get between a superintendent and a microphone. One of my colleagues is also having his last night tonight. After 40-something years, Mark is retiring. We were talking about it today. He's always worked for board, and no more. So, Mark, on behalf of the Auburn School Department and the wonderful work that you have done, we were so lucky to get the best business manager in New England. I know it took a couple lunches and some convincing, but we're very grateful. So thank you, and we wish you well.
Thank you. So I do not have a school committee chairperson's report, other than to thank the two of you for all of your dedication, service to the Auburn School Department the last four years. It has truly been a pleasure getting to know both of you, learning from both of you, and I just wish you both the best. The Auburn School Department is better because of both of you, so thank you. Okay, moving on to city council update.
I do not have an update today.
Does Asher have an update? Under committee reports, understanding committees, we have meetings from the finance subcommittee from June 19 linked. We also have minutes from the curriculum subcommittee meeting on June 5 linked, and minutes from the health and safety subcommittee minute meeting on June 3. And then we also have the agenda linked under the facilities advisory committee that just met this afternoon. So moving on to old business, I will entertain a motion to approve policy AUB EEAEE, school bus emergencies, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Pam and Quinn, any thoughts, discussion on this policy? I know we reviewed it at the first reading. Any other additional comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUB EEAEE. Motion carries. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUBJLCB, immunization of students, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Pat first and Adam second. Any comments, questions, discussion on this policy? Again, we discussed and reviewed it at our last meeting. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUBJLCB for approval. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve policy AUBIMG, animals in school, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion? Corinne, do I have a second? Quinn? Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUBIMG. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve policy AUBIMGA, service animals, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pat, Corinne second. Any comments, questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUBIMGA. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve policy AUBGBEBB, staff conduct with students, for a second reading and approval. Do I have a motion? Corinne?
Second.
Second, Pam. Any questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUBGBEBB. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, I'll entertain a motion to elect a delegate to the main school board's delegate assembly from the Auburn School Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second?
Second.
Pat? And I will go ahead and nominate Corinne as our main school board delegate assembly. Does anyone have any comments, questions, discussion? Anyone else want to put their name in the ring?
Thank you.
All those in favor of nominating Corinne to be our main school board delegate assembly? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to elect an alternate delegate to the main school board's delegate assembly from the Auburn School Committee. Do I have a motion? Corinne, and do I have a second?
Second.
And I will nominate Pam Hart to be the alternate delegate to the main school board delegate assembly from the Auburn School Committee. Does anyone have any objections or discussion or questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to appoint a member of the Auburn School Committee to the City of Auburn Audit Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, second? I need, no, you were first. Corinne, second? Okay, and I will nominate Adam Platts to be the member of the Auburn School Committee, City of Auburn Audit Committee as chair of the finance committee. Anyone have any comments, questions, objections? Okay, all those in favor of nominating Adam to the audit committee? Motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve Amanda Couture and Joseph Landry as the authorized representatives for the Frankie Wimmer Scholarship, and to approve Susan Doris, Amanda Couture, and Scott Aneer as the authorized signers on TD Bank accounts for ELHS scholarship and student activity funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pat and Corinne second. There is a memo regarding banking certificates of authority that's linked to the agenda for any questions or concerns. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Mark, do you have anything to add?
It just reflects the change in positions.
Yep. Okay, seeing no further comment. All those in favor of approving Amanda and Joseph and Dr. Doris, Amanda, and Scott as our authorized signers on those respective accounts. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriation of $463,497 in ESER III funds for the purchase of curriculum materials as recommended by the curriculum and finance subcommittees. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Pam, Pat, second. Any comments, questions?
I'd like to, yeah, just make a comment that, to remind everyone, these are ESER funds that, the public's watching, these are funds that would expire at a certain point in time, so these have no burden on the taxpayer. And also, I believe this is the first time in 20 years that this curricula has been updated, and that is recommended to be updated every five. So not only is it overdue and at no burden to the taxpayer, but it sounds like the curricula has a stamp of approval from Dr. Doris.
Dr. Doris, do you have any comments you want to make about the process of?
We're very excited to purchase these materials. We went through a year-long process where we looked at all of our data, we looked at all the materials that we had, and then we reviewed various programs, and we selected the TCI Science, and then at the high school, we had the Inspire Science textbook series there. So this is going to be a great, a great program for staff to use and also for students. It's very engaging, it's aligned with our standards, and we're excited to move forward with this.
And sounds like an excellent use of our ESER funds, that I think expire the end of September coming up. Okay, all of those in favor to approve the appropriation of the $463,497 in ESER III funds for the purchase of curriculum materials? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to approve a part-time administrative assistant for the nutrition program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Pam, do I have a second?
Second.
Pat? Any comments, discussion, questions?
Is this already in the budget? Where's the money coming from?
This would be funded through the food service program.
And it's going to be combined with another part-time position at the high school to create a full-time position?
Yes, we have a school-year special ed administrative assistant position open. It'll be combined with that to create a full-year, full-time position at no cost to the operating, no additional cost to the operating budget, with the balance funded through the nutrition program.
And there are some more details about this, more specific details in the finance subcommittee minutes. All those in favor to approve a part-time administrative assistant for the nutrition program? Motion carries. All right, we have a list of our upcoming meetings. I will make a note that in July, we only have one regular school committee meeting, which is in the middle of the month, on July 17, so it's a slight adjustment to our usual schedule. And then we will pick back up with our regular schedule of the first and third Wednesdays in August. Do I have any future agenda items or requests for information? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056D for the purpose of labor contract negotiations between the Auburn School Committee and the Auburn Educational Support Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And Pam, second. All those in favor? All right, we are now in executive session. Thank you, everyone.